Hello. Thanks Joyce. Apologies. It is. Four thirty-one, according to Apple. We'll call this meeting, special meeting of February seventeenth to order. Thanks everyone for coming. So this is our first. Budget workshop. And do we want to, Rick, are you? Ready to sort of give us an overview?
Sure, whatever you want.
So we're gonna be. Today's is Rick's opportunity and and our opportunity to have a good conversation with Rick about the DPW. Budget. Which begins on. Line. Oh. I would call it sixty-one, is that what it is? You can read.
Oh.
Yes.
Anything starting with forty and then. Also, the garage is thirty-one.
Did you say two thirty-one?
The transfer station.
Thirty-one.
Oh, on transfer station, sorry.
The garage, stay flat on. Move ahead to. The highway department. It's. Salary increases were per contract and I've asked that we. Create a new position down there with. Called, whether it's gonna be crew later, shop foreman or. Whatever the union decides is the best. Name for. That's somebody down there that. Take over for me or. More like during the days also be in charge of the crews while they're out. While I'm doing other things.
So that's reflected in that line two seventy-one of the. Seven point three four, so that would, you're looking at. Increasing a CDL maintainer at. To two dollars an hour to create that crew chief or we have to hear from the union what it's gonna be called.
I put in two dollars an hour, hopefully that's what we can agree to. With the union.
Okay. So I, I, I get to see you every day, Rick, and we talked about this stuff, so. Rufus and Glenn. Just looking for questions. He's, Rick is seeing a lot more. Would you call it administrative, not administrative, but. There's a lot. A lot of paperwork, a lot of. Pricing things.
And with the sidewalk projects coming up, my name got put in to be the contact for the town, so I'm sure there's gonna be quite a bit of. Some time spent. On that each day with questions and stuff.
So you're not, you're not, you're just creating a new position, you're not hiring a new person. Yeah, okay, what's the high opt-out stipend?
Health insurance.
Health insurance, there's two. Two people that take the opt-out.
Okay.
Which is available to anybody, any employee in town.
There's a, um, so if someone opts out of the health insurance benefits, they, um, the.
Contracts is fifteen grand or.
Right.
Thereabouts.
Per year, yeah.
And. Next line that I showed an increase was road oil for ship sailing. I'm guessing the market's probably gonna, the prices are gonna be a little higher this year. See now, so all the fuels have gone up. That would be. Line two ninety-three, depending on which, which form of the budget you're looking at.
Yeah, two ninety-three.
And then. Down road as well.
Rick.
Yes.
Um, like equipment fuel.
I kept that, we usually stay under on that.
Because. So the actuals are.
Fire department repay us.
All right.
Look at the, uh, the current budget I just got shows I'm down to three thousand dollars, but I don't think Barbara's. Given me the credits yet for the bus company and the fire department lately, so.
How much does the fire department end up using about?
Probably around maybe five thousand dollars a year, something like that.
Glenn, I don't wanna hog all the questions.
I'm, uh, I'm just waiting in here gently, my first budget workshop. I got a question about staff salaries, how many, how many, how many staff, how many people?
Uh, I have to count them.
Six. Six.
Six, not including.
Six total, so, um, so going back through the years, I'm looking at staff salary, was it about the same, like six, six people, I mean, probably changed.
We have. One more now than we, we used to be five.
Oh, okay, so this year is one more than, than last year, that's five, right?
Right.
And the, the road crew are. Union, so they're under a, you know, a union contract.
So I'm trying to do the math quickly here, so, uh, so with, with all these salaries and health and pension, everything's going up about six or seven percent, is that, what's the norm? What has been the norm, I mean, I can. Look at some of this.
So we, we're, um. We had a brief conversation last meeting that we would talk about salaries. Across the board, sort of last. Because we do in the past, what, what we do is we look at all of the. You know, all of the staff as a whole and we do a, um, a one percentage for all of the staff. It doesn't change by department because there's not, um, we don't have performance measures, we don't have. You know, there's no program in place to do that, so it's always been a flat. Figure across the board. I'm just looking for what it was in the past few years. So last year. Hold on, I'm sorry. Had a, a call about four minutes before the meeting started that. Just. Got me off of my, uh. Off of my game, so last year was two percent. Year before. Was also two percent.
That was only the. The salary line, is that all you're talking about, Glenn, or?
Uh, yes, just the, yeah, just the salary line, I suppose. Cause everything else is flat, pretty much. So the six and the seven, so who determines the six and the seven percent, I mean, who, who determines this as we, the, the initial proposal anyway? How do these numbers get, get decided?
Some departments put in a, a request and that's reflected in their support documentation. Barbara. In order to fill out the whole budget document, she put it, and you'll see at the bottom of each page in the footer, she put, um. The insurance is at a plus nine and payroll is at a plus six. So some departments put in a request, some didn't. If you go to the budget folder, the operating budget folder.
Yep.
You'll see, um, all the supporting documentation.
And then the total highway department, I'm looking at the very bottom, so the total for the whole department is, uh, is up a little bit over five percent. Is that roughly in line with, with other, other years as well, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to do the math again.
Um, it should be in the budget document what it was for the prior year, sorry, I'm going between a couple of different documents. So. Previous year.
Glenn, I, I think it is, I, I think the reason that you're seeing a higher number is because Rick is putting in the proposal for that additional two dollars an hour. For that position, so I think that's skewing the number a little bit when you're looking at it.
Okay.
Plus the added. Member from past years, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It also depends on, too, if you're looking at the proposed one that Barbara sent out. Those were the actuals. You have to look at the budget worksheets to see what the. The budgets work, those ones on that proposed budget were actual expenditures. So.
So last year was, uh, for Public Works, it was a two point one two percent increase. And he had. Um, some decreases, Rick, you had some decreases for sweeping. And drainage, it looks like, and for equipment fuel, which is going in the opposite direction this year.
Last year's budget is one million three oh eight, this, the request is one four oh five. Percentages can be way off on these budgets, cause. Another real big number, it's. Not much, but you can do twenty percent on a hundred dollars and it's. You know, fairly anything, so.
So Joyce, do we generally, um, make a motion to? Sort of check the box on this department other than salary, which will.
I don't think, we're just talking. We, we, you're just getting information, we don't need motions. At the moment.
I would agree.
That's, I'm, I, I'm also just asking.
Now, this, this is like a, a discussion, initial discussion, so, you know. Or informational more than anything else.
Rick, under the town roads asphalt. Is that materials or do you think you're gonna? Get, um, more roads? Done?
That's, uh, material and the, whatever company is, puts it down.
Right, is your, and is your plan to actually? Do more projects?
With ten thousand dollars, no?
No, the line two ninety-eight.
Yeah, that's increased.
Yeah, it's only a ten thousand dollar increase, that's not gonna.
Get the driveway.
I mean, I have no idea, I don't even think the prices have come out for this year yet, but I can't imagine that they're gonna be. The same as last year, they're. With everything going up the way it is. So we may even be doing less mileage than we did before. With the same amount of money.
Right.
And do, so when they come out with pricing, does it? Does it stay steady or is it something that can fluctuate because it?
Usually with the state bid pricing, they pick a number for the year and then they have an escalation number. Can go up so much. For every time period. Depending on the market. Once in a while it goes down, but. Not that often, usually once they get up there, it will stay there for the year and then. If they drop at the following year, that's good, but. And the only other line was a little bit in the tree line. Another three thousand dollars. Another. Day and a half or two days of tree work.
Just in case we don't get enough high winds.
Well. If the high winds put them in the power lines and they, they take them down for me.
What's the cost of living increase for this year, two thousand twenty-two?
Social Security is five point nine.
Right.
What was it?
Well, social security, right, so social security for retirees is five point nine.
So the staff salary is higher than, um, than five point nine or six, you know, kind of across the board here salaries because of the extra person? The extra staff member?
Yeah, they are getting that, in the contract, it was either two or two point two five or. Two in a. Two point five, I forget. But, but I had an extra person plus it changed from a non-CDL to a CDL position at the same time that we had it. So that made it. Increase more also.
I got it, Rick, I thought I had it.
Or so contracts on dollars instead of percentage.
Right.
This is one percent. I think it's two point five one.
Okay. So just, just looking at the last three years, I mean, all of those items below, below that line don't change very much. Uh, the, um, equipment, new equipment, uniforms, you know, oil, oil went up a little bit there. But, uh, but the, but the salaries year by year, that's the biggest item that goes up.
Normally, yeah, salaries and the insurance.
Salaries and insurance, okay.
It's. A lot in the last. Quite a few years, we've been asked to keep everything. Just flat, so.
And between, uh, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two, there's, was a bigger jump for your department, it seems there. Little bit over. A million to one point four.
Oh, well, that, the twenty-one numbers, the actual spend expenditure, not the budget.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right, I see, I'm sorry.
The budget for twenty-one was.
What was that?
Uh, one point. Our one three oh eight four thirty-two.
One three oh eight forty-two.
Do we wanna go over to transfer station?
Yes, please.
Hi. So it's line three fifty-five. On paper one.
Yeah, and, uh. I changed the hours a little bit for the, the manager position. As they add, that was figured in with. The previous manager taken. Four weeks plus off a year. And. I don't plan on taking that off, so I. So I put in for eighteen hours per week for, for nine hundred and thirty-six hours. Uh, and that two. Attendance. Were sixteen hours. Plus a few. Hours in there extra for each month for, if we have to do additional cleanup or if they have to meet any vendors for pickups or anything, so. For the attendance. You're currently getting, uh. Eighteen something, I just. I asked for that to go up to twenty dollars each for them.
Right there at eighteen nineteen right now. Rick, any thoughts on, you know, we've been getting a lot of feedback to see if we can open. Some point during the week, whether it's half a day or one day.
Well, we could probably. Find staffing for it. That would depend on. Whether I had to be there, uh, but both Rob and. Zach are certified, so. I'm not, just because I won't be required to be there for that, but.
Right.
And we'd have to renegotiate with the haulers because according to our permits, stuff's supposed to be all out there within forty-eight hours.
Right.
The garbage, so that would be a. Another haul, and then we'd have to decide whether we're gonna stay open the full two days on the weekend or whether you would cut back. On that, if you're gonna be open one day during the week, so.
By the push for change, Jane.
There's been, um, public feedback asking for. A day during the week. Cause sometimes people work all weekend or they're. Um, away, and then if you can't bring your garbage on one weekend, then it's sitting in your garbage cans for an entire extra weekend. We are, I think, the only transfer station that's only open on the weekends in our, in H R R A. Not that we, we have to do what everybody else does. Just to, just to frame it in, you know, comparison.
So what's currently budgeted? Wouldn't be enough to cover that, that's.
So what you're, you're asking for would cover if we decide to. Do a half day somewhere or?
Well, if you cut out a half day, yeah, then that would equal out, but right now it's just two weekend, the two days plus, uh. Like four hours a month for. In case time runs over cleaning up or something like that.
No shovel.
Yeah. I, I, right now, I'm not really interested in. Expanding it without a lot of. More information and. Um, I think there are gonna be other issues in the budget that mean that this might not be the year anyway.
Uh, hazardous materials. Increase. Is that just for seeing that we're gonna?
That's all the hazardous waste space, the numbers have been going up every year.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's funny, it went up in twenty twenty-one and then. Down in. This past year, but yeah, I think you're right, because we're advertising all of the days that H R R A does and we still get to go to a couple up north, too.
Been over budget the last two years. With over eight hundred and sixty-six and twenty and. Thousand or five hundred and five last year.
Oh, I have for year-to-date, this year is thirteen sixty-eight and it was budgeted for twenty-five hundred.
Well, you still have three of them coming up this spring, three or four, plus the Falls Village one.
Right. Okay.
Start again and last year they started, H R A started them in April, so. One every month.
And then supplies, just from what's. Been happening, I mean, you can see in the budget, it's increasing.
That covers everything except for postage, including the tags and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
And then either, there's been more signage.
That might also include your porta potty.
Yeah.
That just doubled. Not in size either, just in cost.
Wow. And the, um. Landfill monitoring. How many, do, does that, is that in perpetuity or does it? And once we maintain a certain level up there?
That's just a yearly test on the, where the dump used to be.
Right, we have to do that forever.
Uh, I'd have to go back and read the closing report, how, whether it's. A set number of years or until they decide it's. Right of the way up there.
Okay. I know because on that, um. The monitoring that you do on the storm water, I think it is.
That's not different line altogether.
Right, no, I know that, but deep has you, a long time ago, there were more materials that were getting tested and then as the levels.
Yeah.
Went away, you didn't have to test for it anymore. I was just wondering if it was the same thing with. With the landfill monitoring.
I don't know, that's a. The engineering firm comes once a year, takes a water sample and sends a report in.
Right. Okay.
And sorry, in case I missed it, so the so the salary and social security, that's an eight point three eight percent, and that's that's higher than the six. And why is that again?
I asked for a. To change the hours for me around because I don't take the. Time off like John used to, so I'm there more.
Okay.
And uh. I asked for a. And it, the guys are making eighteen nineteen, I believe Jean said. I know it's eighteen and change, but.
Yeah.
Increase them up to twenty, so that bumped it up a little bit as far as percentage of that. Other. They're each figured for a. It's at sixteen hours a week. And then I added in. Uh, twenty. No. Four or five dollar hours a month for just extra stuff that in case it happens. Whether it be cleanups or snow shovel or whatever.
The other questions?
I don't have anymore.
Okay. And Rick was the only one signed up for this workshop, so we're unless. Anyone has anything further? I'm going to.
The uh. Order of assessment appeals. We can probably go back and cap that salary at fifteen hundred.
What line is that?
One twenty two.
Thanks.
We, I don't think we are gonna come anywhere close, but um fifteen hundred. For the salary line. And. Probably. Four hundred for the clerk. And then we can adjust everything else. But uh, we have not been getting. As much um, since we went to every five years. It was when when we had revows every ten years with big swings. We we'd have tons of people coming in.
Interesting.
So we'll see what happens, but I think we could um. Reduce those to ones minimal, but it. Should keep something in there, but um. I don't think we need more than that. So that's more assessment field report.
That's another category and other. One we can. Check off of our list. Any further questions? See anything in the chat? So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at. Five oh five. Donna. You had your hand up.
Yeah, I just have one question. If you look at the front page of the proposed budget. And you look at what B consists of. It says Fire Marshal, Resident Trooper, EMS Staffing, Litchfield County Dispatch. Aren't you missing something out of that category?
Now, let me just get back to that.
The the B.
Yep, pub under public safety. Aren't you missing either, I I guess it comes under two names, civil preparedness or. Um, emergency management, whatever the appropriate name is it for at this particular day?
You mean to come up with the eight hundred?
So it looks like that might. The. Yeah, I have, I'd have to talk to Barbara. It looks like it might be missing out of that wrap up page.
I looked at that earlier today. And I forgot what it was.
And so I guess my question is, is that number of eight hundred and forty one oh five four correct? If it's missing out of the out of the category on the bottom, is it included in the number? Um, under the July twenty two, June twenty three?
We'll have to check with Barbara.
Okay.
The forty one. Has to also include line two sixty, which is civil preparedness.
And and isn't civil preparedness, emergency management and? Why aren't they underneath the same name? Like, that's the other thing I never understood.
So that's a that category, the categories are named by the Board of Finance.
Okay, well, then you can ask Barbara that too then, right?
So it would be a. It would. It would be a request to the Board of Finance to have the category name changed.
Well, Barbara, it's a treasurer, I'm sure can do that, but is the seventy two thousand, seven hundred and eighty five dollars included? In the eight hundred and forty one oh five four, I guess is my question.
Yep, and we have to ask that out to Barbara.
Okay.
That's what. The math says it's included in there.
Okay, that was all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. And we're at. I'm sorry.
Lynn has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, I only have so many pains on the top of my display here. Um, and again, just to be clear that these are not town meetings, these are board of selectmen meetings for us. For the boards to discuss. Right now, we're discussing Rick's budget, so it's really. The, you know, those two budgets that we're intending to discuss. But Lynn, you had your hand up.
Just a quick question, has there been any decision made about a percentage salary increase of the town employees? Or let's.
We're just.
Six percent?
Barbie, Barbara populates the the document with a a flat number. And but it this, this is a preliminary draft document, very early for conversation. Of the board document.
Okay, but they were put in as six percent across the board?
Yep.
Okay, and just to follow up on Donna's question, who would make that request to change the civil preparedness to emergency management? Would it be the selected, would it be the actual department?
I have to check with Barbara, I don't know.
Because it's been brought up year after year after year and it's never.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I don't see any hands up. It is five eleven and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Any other questions, Glenn?
I do not.
Oh, okay, second.
Someone to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Fantastic, I'll second that motion. All those in favor? I.
All right.
Great, thank you all, we'll see you in fifty minutes.